All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have our roll call, please? Here. Here, 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 here. Here.
Yes.
Here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Here, here. Mr. Harris, can you hang up on the computer?
Wait a minute, let me hang it up. Let me hang.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting for... Meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 29 and 8, to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate, and 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, school board?
Settle.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Harris?
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome, Yolanda.
All right, if you two can now just... Oh, crap. We forgot to allow y'all in.
Oh, man.
That's all right. All right, so let's... All right, so let's come out of closed session real quick. Do I have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Settle.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Harris?
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, certification, please.
We don't need a certification.
We don't need it.
You did not actually have any discussions in closed.
Okay. Easy enough. All right, this time, is there a motion to allow Counselors Harris and Stokes to participate remotely?
Settle.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Day. At this time, Counselor Stokes first and then Counselor Harris. Can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and why you're asking to participate remotely?
At home, in my kitchen, too. And health and heat.
Okay.
The heat advisory. Stop us if I stay out because of medication.
Okay, so medical. All right, Counselor Harris?
I'll put my phone for medical reason.
Okay, thank you all. All right, any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, pass. I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Now, a motion to go into closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, 29 and 8, to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate, and 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, school board?
Settle.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Now, we're going into closed session. All right, so if you two want to dial in on the closed session link that was sent to you in the email...
I'm gonna hang up, Yolanda.
Okay.
All right, bye.
Okay.
All right, thank you all. Closed session. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Settle.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Good seeing them, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, certification, please.
Were only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Roll call?
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion to appoint Katherine Kirikoff to the Bright Point Community College Board, Christopher Reber to the school board, John Griffin to the school board, and Heather Bennett to the school board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes?
I cannot support the appointment of Mr. Weber to the school board, but agree upon the others.
Okay. So, it's a no, but just annotate in the notes that...
It's just a school board?
Yeah.
Counselor Holloway?
Oh, I apologize, roll call. I was gonna say, I didn't ask for discussion. We doing roll call now?
We're doing the appointments.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes... How do I do that?
Six to one.
I want to make... Point of information, I want to make sure that was proper, so... We don't have to separate that motion now, seeing that she... Because how can she...
I understand that it was... It was notated as a no vote on all... If... If you're not going to block vote, then the choices are either to annotate it as a no vote or to separate it out and vote on the candidate's...
Yeah, I just... Yeah, because it was a block, I just... She'll be recorded as no, but we're gonna annotate it in the minutes that she supported Ms. Kirikoff, Mr. Griffin, and Ms. Bennett. Okay?
But... What I'm saying, but still... So the annotation still would be a no for all of those, though, right?
Right. Because she wouldn't vote no.
So then why won't we separate it if she wants to vote?
Yeah, because I support the others. I just don't support the one.
Because no one asked to break it out, that's all? I mean, we can.
Oh.
Do we just need to make a separate motion just to break it out, or...
You don't need to make a motion to break it out, but it sounds like two of the three candidates there's uniform support on, so just have two separate votes, one for those two candidates and one for the candidate who has different support.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to appoint Chris Reber to the school board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint Katherine Kirikoff to the Bright Point Community College Board, John Griffin to the school board, and Heather Bennett to the school board?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
I guess.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. Do we have to do any striking or anything for that first motion that we put in place?
I don't think so. I think it's Mr. Bissett? I apologize. Do we need to... Does just the notes... Minutes need to be stricken on the first vote that we took? Or do the other two just overrule it? Where we did the block vote...
It was a reconsideration, so...
As I understood, that the block vote wasn't completed.
No, it was completed.
It was. So we renewed, do we need to strike the first?
Yeah, we'll just have to notate it in the minutes that the vote was replaced by a broken-out vote.
Okay. Can you make it...
Replaced by a broken-out vote?
Yes. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move into our work session, and first up is Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor. Thank you all. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor Joyner, and members of council. Tonight I come before you to follow up in regards to the request of exploring a membership sliding scale at the Hopewell Community Center.
Yes.
So, again, the subject was brought to by city council to explore this opportunity to present membership sliding scale options for the community center, also to introduce any necessary staffing that would be required for the additional administration of that program, and to discuss benefits and challenges of a membership of a sliding scale option. The localities that we researched that are very similar to us is Prince George, Cuyahoga Heights, and of course, the Petersburg YMCA. Now, Prince George and Cuyahoga Heights are very different than we are. We're actually more in line with the Petersburg YMCA, just based off of our facilities and what we offer. For example, Prince George, they have two exercise rooms, which consist of weights, a couple of cardio machines. Cuyahoga Heights has a room that has a row machine, elliptical, free weights, and a bench. YMCA is, again, very similar. They have fitness rooms, fitness classes, pool access, and a full gymnasium as well. So they're closely aligned to us. As a reminder, these are our current membership rates as it sits. Our resident rates are $10. Non-resident rate monthly is 25. Our youth adults... Oh, sorry, excuse me. Our youth are 100% free all year round. For a monthly discounted, which is anybody 50 or older or active-duty military, receive a rate of $8 for a resident, 15 for a non-resident, and for the youth, it's $15 if you're a non-Hopewell resident youth. With that being said, the breakout of that is actually 50 cents a day, 40 cents for those that are discounted membership. For the adult non-resident member, it's $1.25, and for the youth non-resident, it's 75 cents. So that's, ladies and gentlemen, that is less than a senior McDonald's cup of coffee, which is 97 cents, okay? When we resume Saturday hours, that cost will obviously go down even further. So for an adult, it's 42 cents a day. For those discounted adults, it's 33 cents. For the adults non-residents, $1.04, and for the youth non-resident, it's 60 cents. As you can see...
We got a question from Counselor Holloway?
Yes, sir.
A quick question. Now, this date breakdown, I would assume you're doing about 30 days?
Correct. Our memberships are a 30 calendar day. So, for example, June has 30 days in it. It has nine Saturdays... Between Saturdays and Sundays, it has nine days, and we had the Juneteenth holiday this year, so this month. So take those 10 days, so it's actually 20 operational days that these members get.
All right, so the reason why I was asking was exactly that the operation of days and aside of those days, the availabilities, for example, or lack thereof availability to pool, et cetera. So, in turn, with the available days, how many available days... Is it like with the pool and so forth?
So the pool is what the city council has given us the lifeguard. So with us four lifeguards, we shouldn't have any down days. It's just we're in the hiring process for that. Currently, yeah, right now, we're still closed from like 12 to 4 for the pool. But that doesn't exclude any of the other amenities that we have going on. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Did I answer that question?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Counselor Stokes, did you have a question?
Yes. She was talking about the 50-plus membership fees. In the membership, in consideration of the 50-plus and elderly, do you take in consideration the Silver Sneakers program and all of those programs?
So Silver Sneakers and Renew are a separate program. They actually have a different membership. Once they prove... We can verify their eligibility with their health insurance. It's actually zero cost to the actual member. We bill Silver Sneakers and Renew directly, and unfortunately, I can talk to you offline in regards to what we get back per member per visit, but it's something that they have asked us to keep close to the vest, so I can't reveal that number in public. But yes, they'd be impressed with that.
I'm a member of the Silver Sneakers program, and I'm interested. And I'm also... I also know that other elderly people in the community would be interested, particularly if they have the Silver Sneakers program, but I didn't... You know, hear you mention anything about the Silver Sneakers. Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yep, you can continue.
Excellent. All right, so as you can see, our total revenue based off of each of those memberships, we're bringing in approximately $28,208 currently for our memberships. And you can see below our Silver Sneakers, this is our fiscal year 2025 up until June 5th. This is what we brought in. We have about 16 resident members and 12 non-residents for Renew, and we're bringing in about $980 for this fiscal year. For the Silver Sneakers, we have 116 residents and 66 non-residents. Well, we're bringing in about $7,822. So a grand total of all of our memberships, we're bringing in $37,000 for this fiscal year as of June 5th. So the research membership types tiers, as I mentioned before, we are closely aligned to Petersburg YMCA as far as what we offer and our footprint of our facility. So their rates are, as you see on the screen, which is anybody making an annual household income of less than $20,000. The adult rate is $33. For a senior, it's 32, and then for a teen, it's 17. And of course, youth, which is anybody essentially under 17, is free. You can see how those numbers go up as the tiers go higher with a max out of $74,999. Based off my research, I believe the average household income here in Hopewell, we're sitting about 56, if I'm not mistaken off the top of my head, just roughly. So we would fall... Most would fall right between tier four, which is 23, $46 for an adult membership, and $44, $40 for a senior membership. So in order to facilitate this, this requires an additional admin. We would need to have to facilitate keeping up with sensitive documents such as whether it's tax paperwork, pay stubs, and so forth, when we do our verification on their annual household income. So in order to do that, we have to have someone essentially dedicated to just that service. So we have two options here, which would be a customer service supervisor or a customer engagement manager, which will help oversee the entire front desk, provide higher level of customer patronage... Customer experience, excuse me.
Questions?
Counselor Holloway and Counselor Ellis.
Joyner was pushed to you first.
Oh. That just seems like that we would need one dedicated person. When you go back to the numbers that you're talking about...
For the tier one or the actual memberships currently?
The actual number of memberships.
Today, as of today, as of June 5th, excuse me.
Yeah. I mean, you're looking at tracking, what, how many people? 200? 220, something like that, or...
So monthly, we have 379. Annuals, we have... So we're looking at 378.
So you know that...
So we're looking around... With youth, not counting, because youth are all... Our youth are free. We're looking about around 500. But with the anticipated of a sliding scale, we could then include additional memberships as well. So there could be additional memberships that come in with that sliding scale option.
Yeah, I just... I mean, I think that that's... I can't imagine that it would take one full employee to do that work.
And we have to verify it, so when they've...
I understand, but you know, once you verify, then, you know... I don't know. It just seems like a lot to me.
Yes, ma'am, and I understand that. And that's something that's... It's gonna be an ongoing thing, because they have to... Remember, they have to renew every so often. But also, people are coming in every day, so they're not coming in just on one particular day to do that.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Would this employee...
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
Were you finished? I mean, were you finished? Would this employee be responsible with tasks with other...
Correct. It would be overseeing our entire front desk to alleviate that requirement, to repurpose our business managers to not have that sole focus, to realize that to be their sole focus. If we were able to get these positions, whether it's a supervisor or even if it's additional full-time staff person, as Vice Mayor Joyner mentioned, to kind of oversee that program. The reason why I was requesting either supervisor or manager is because we're dealing with people's data clearly information. I just want to make sure that we have the proper capacity and skill set that can handle that kind of confidentiality and so forth, so... Thank you, sir. So the benefits of a sliding scale, obviously, we can increase accessibility. Lower-income families can afford membership, in theory, but as we saw the numbers, that's not a reality. Encourage community engagement. It also provides a diverse population that come into the community center, which I believe we already hit on. If you go through the community center at any point in day, you see all types of people. So feel free to stop by. Any hour, you'll see a good group. Our senior group comes in the morning, and then we have active adults in the afternoon. Obviously, our main goal is to improve community health, which is access to our wellness programs. The challenges we mentioned is inconsistent revenue, which I'm not really... I've never been given a clear direction on whether or not we are revenue generating, if we're a hybrid, or if we just want to be offering these services to the community. That's something that we can talk about further, but it's never been a directive to get X amount of dollars back of our requested... Request of general funds.
Yeah, I think... I think the last time we were talking about bringing this information to us, seeing what the... Seeing what the expenses look like and everything, so that we could kind of go into a determination. Are you talking about determining the fee set, correct?
Sorry, can you clarify that question for me one more time?
You were just speaking to the simple fact of the fee, of how we're gonna do, whether or not it can be hybrid, open to the public, so forth.
Correct. The department, to my knowledge, has never been told, at least in my seven years here, we need 10% of revenue generated back of your request of the general fund. So if I can get that direction from this council, or if it's not a major priority, then please let me know. But essentially, right now, we're not even bringing in a percentage of what we're asking for, just because our fees are so affordable for our residents.
I don't know... I don't know what the rest of council's status is on that, but I think we were talking about bringing in the sliding scale so we make sure that our senior citizens and those of that nature can afford without those fees being astronomical to them and, you know, fixed income, et cetera. But I would personally like to see, and I don't know what the rest of council is, be... I think the best outlook in that would be to get with the city manager and the finance director to see what we really need to do financially and what that looks like. What would be my thoughts?
I could tell you it would be a lot higher than what we are currently at and what... Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
And we... Obviously, we don't want to do that.
I mean, of course, but I'm saying is, and where the council... Well, we can still get those numbers.
Yes, sir.
So we can come in and say, hey, you know, we got to give back to taxpayers. Pay for budgeting, period. So we, of course, we're not gonna be astronomical in thought, but the reality too, so that the citizens can hear and that we can make those appropriate decisions.
Absolutely.
That's it from me, I don't know.
Mayor Parton?
Yeah, we can keep it going.
Thank you, sir. Inconsistent revenue, again, we talked about that. The complex administration dealing with someone's very sensitive information. Potential stigmatization, which obviously, on those that are lower scale, may feel not inclined to disclose, because they don't want people to have that personal information. They don't want to seek that resource. And then, of course, operational coverage costs may not cover. And some of the required documents that we would need to verify that annual household income, as I mentioned before, are annual taxes, pay stubs, which has social security numbers attached to it and all that good stuff, which is, again, having someone of a higher skill set that understands that confidentiality and be able to that, as well as bank statements and so forth. So a lot of sensitive data information and being able to store that properly. Then next up... This is just for consideration, as this is a work session, but the staff membership fee proposal, option one, which is what I had presented in the previous one, which is going up. I know that was a concern, so... But that was the one, so I didn't want to backtrack. The option number two...
No.
Hold on one second, Yolanda. Let's let her finish the slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I thought I was muted.
That's okay.
Right. So that's not one we wanted, but I didn't want y'all to think I was backtracking. That is the one I presented. The membership fee structure number two is a difference, but still increasing it slightly. So this will go from a $10 resident monthly to a 13, so it's a $3 increase and so on. So we would essentially be bringing in a grand total of about $40,000. Option three is to go exactly with a YMCA-type tier. Based off of that, that is extremely high compared to where we are, which is not my recommendation. And then the fourth option would be to stay as we are currently.
Go ahead, Yolanda.
I'm concerned about this presentation for a lot of reasons. I agree with Counselor Holloway. It was asked of you to do this so that children who live... Um, it was asked of you to do this so that children who live, not just children and seniors, who live in public housing, et cetera, that the parents are able to afford to send their children here. So we need a sliding scale that is determined by our locality.
She, she did give that as free for kids, for the youth.
Well, I, I'm not just talking about just the youth, but there are other people that are above the age of seventeen, living in public housing, that have other issues, um, such as, you know, they may be mentally incapacitated, they go, they stay in public housing because they're beyond seventeen, but mentally, they're still eight years old. But those families that may wanna send their children, or, or their low to moderate income families, that wanna use the community center and have other expenses coming out of their home, and then a lot of them are huge families, um, that have five or six children that they wanna send. That you said the youth is free, but still, the sliding scale will benefit them. And then it is, appears that this is not something that the community center person presenting is interested in.
May I, may I?
And then they don't, wait, wait, you made a comment about their personal stuff. The only thing they should, in other localities that do this, the only thing that they should have to present is a public housing lease with their name on it. And you don't need all their personal information and what their income levels are, because it's already been proven on another document.
And, and again, it's all based off of locality and what the individual policies are. Now, that is an option, absolutely, Councilor Stokes, that's not an issue there, if that's what we want to utilize, as long as it's within the policy, if that's the case. But again, I wanna remind you that it is literally fifty cents a day for the memberships as we currently have them. And, and I know that you keep referring to the youth, um, and, and the families that are associated with the youth.
But youth is, anyway, defined in public housing as a twenty-two-year-old that has a mentality of an eight.
Correct, and, and most of the time, sorry.
But go ahead, I've worked in other localities that do this, and it's literally isolated. So you're not gonna find it in the paperwork that you went out to get, because it's usually done by the Petersburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority, is gonna submit to the YMCA that these members of our community qualify for the sliding scale.
And, and just for clarification, sometimes if they have a mental capacity, um, disability, they do qualify for those Medicare benefits, which would then allow them to have the renewal or silver sneakers, um, in regards to their membership, so that would again be a zero cost to the patron.
I've never seen those type-
Uh, I used, yes, ma'am, I used to work for an insurance company, and I used to deal with, uh, medical insurance, and I understand that that is one of the qualifications, and they do have that, yes.
Some of the parents must not know, but I know I worked the one in Petersburg, and I was the one that forwarded when, when our residents applied and qualified for the sliding scale, I sent that to the YMCA or any other organization that would consider these families', um, income, so that those children are allowed to swim at the pool, or do whatever they gotta do, um, with the number of kids in those low to moderate income households.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what we're asking for.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and again, I'd just like to reiterate that all Hopewell youth are one hundred percent free.
You, you could keep reiter- reiterating that part, but you, you know where I'm going with this. There are some that are beyond the seventeen-year-old, and there are some parents that have complained that I can't afford certain things at our community center in this Hopewell.
Uh, Councilor Stokes, can we allow her to finish the, um, presentation?
I will.
Cause I think she has a couple comments, and then I have a idea that I think, you know, might have some interest, um, you know, amongst the members on council.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then this is just jumping back as a reminder, um, as I come back for you in July for the fee proposal, is just the Hopewell Community Center adjusting those rates and pavilion rates as well to help generate and become for the Hopewell City Council. Let's see, and then we have the breakout of the rental fees for the athletic fields. Again, just being in comparison to other localities, um, and then, I don't know if you want me to spend time on these in depth, but it's just a slight increase in regards to that, um, just to help generate revenue for the city.
Yeah, so I, I, I think one thing that I think is kind of, um, a percolating issue is maybe, you know, let's look at like a financial analysis of if we raise that age from seventeen to like twenty-one for youth. Um, I don't think that that would have much of an impact at all, but I think it would target, you know, young adults. Um, um, but I think the other thing that I think would end up helping you guys, you know, long-term in keeping your rates, uh, low, uh, is to look at doing exactly like what we're doing with the, um, the Marina, treating it like an enterprise fund. And so, you know, the money that you guys generate off the memberships and, you know, from the, um, the, the swim team, you know, rentals, to let that money flow right back into, you know, the community center for, you know, capital improvements.
Uh, I believe we discussed that before, and I'll let Deputy City Manager, uh, Jordan answer.
Now, I can, I can tell you right off the bat, I, I think I know where some of this conversation is going, but you guys certainly have more capital needs there than what that's going to allow, but this at least gives you something, kinda like how Charles is managing, you know, the, um, the Marina, where, you know, he, yeah, he needs, you know, a lot of money, he needs, you know, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix it up due to the neglect of, you know, what, ten, fifteen years down there, not reinvesting back in like the city should have. But I think if, you know, we create, you know, the money, like the pooled cash style, you know, where it goes back into a fund that, you know, you can go and take care of, you know, small immediate needs-
That would be awesome.
-that will prevent larger capital projects down the road.
That, that would be phenomenal, but I'd-
But yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Stacy, I just, I, I knew where one of the comments were going, and I just wanted to save you some breath.
Yes, so previously, the Parks and Rec Department was set up as a separate enterprise fund, but prior to my arrival, that switch was made to put them under the general fund. Now, we can break them back out, the general fund will still have to compensate for the Parks and Rec Department, even regardless whether it's enterprise or under the general fund, but I do understand in what you're saying is the revenue that they receive goes specifically to their capital projects for their improvements within the branch, and the, the general fund would just compensate the additional forty thousand dollars that they currently bring in in revenues for.
I mean, I, I don't know how, you know, city council feels, I mean, that's just, I think that's something that's very manageable, you know, on, you know, y'all's end. Because I feel like if it, it was set up this way, I think it could have, you know, prevented, you know, the, the HVAC issues, you know, that you guys are experiencing, or, you know, older equipment that could, you know, be on a more of a replacement cycle.
That'd be awesome.
Mister, uh, City Manager, is that something that you guys can, you know, look into?
I'm thinking that we should study it and, and, and look at it for the next budget, budget cycle, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, now, I, I know, like, you know, overall, um, you know, the membership fees and everything, um, maybe look at, you know, a couple options, because I mean, I, I think everyone understands, you know, the, the rate has to, you know, somewhat go up in order to help pay for, you know, these improvements that need to be done. But I think doing a very, um, structured, you know, tiered system where, you know, one year, you know, it goes up, you know, somewhere between fifty cents and a dollar, and the next year, it does this, and we do that for, you know, X number of years, so people can anticipate that. And then, you know, they have the reassurance that, you know, this money that's, you know, collected here is going straight back into the community center. And then you guys can, you know, showcase, you know, hey, yeah, you know, your rate went up fifty cents, you know, a month or whatever, but you're gonna get this new equipment, and that's where, you know, you can demonstrate where that money goes to.
Yes, sir, I, I would love to be able to do that, if, if that's the city council's wish, absolutely.
Is, is there some appetite from city council to look at kind of proposals like that, I mean, not saying we're going to do it, but-
I, I absolutely agree, and also- The City Manager.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He looks at those things.
Yeah.
And also, other, other things, I don't know, um, I know rent out the pavilions and things of the nature, but I see you all very busy in the city doing other things as well, so, um, if there are other, um, avenues in which the, the recreation and parks can, uh, generate more revenue, uh, to bring as a consideration where it wouldn't be de- uh, directly affecting the membership fees, but rental of equipment or something of nature, I don't know if that's possible, but might want to discuss those things as well.
When you say rental of equipment, or?
I, I, well, I don't mean exactly renting the equipment out, but like, I see y'all set up a lot of stuff, kinda like Public Works does, and so on and so on. And I know, like, when somebody has an event, they will pay, um, what do you call it, the?
The event fee, special event fee?
Correct, correct, those type of things, uh, when you're having it set up and et cetera, consider those special event fees going up and blah, blah, blah.
Sir, thank you.
We, we should look at all of those, I was just sitting here, you're thinking about the rental opportunity and revenue from that, and, and you're right, equipment, staging-
Correct.
-you know, et cetera, all present opportunities for, for, uh, for revenue for, uh, the recreation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, looking at the time that we're, uh, at right now, is there a motion to extend the meeting until we complete all the regular business items? All right, motion's been made by Councilor Holloway and seconded by Councilor Day, starting a discussion, seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Park-
Yes.
Sorry, let me start over, I'm running a long spot. Councilor Day.
Yes.
Councilor Stokes.
Yes.
Councilor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Councilor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion has a seventy zero.
Okay, thank you, uh, moving on to number two, Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, um, I will try to be brief. I'm here to talk about the Hopewell Convenience Center, and using it somewhat as a public service announcement for the fact that we do have a convenience center. Um, it's exactly what it is, it's convenient, it's very convenient, I come from a locality that doesn't have one, so I find it to be very convenient for the, uh, citizens of Hopewell. So what is the convenience center? Uh, it's operated by the Department of Public Works, provides, uh, residential refuse customers with a convenient location to discard debris. Uh, we accept refrigerators, tire, various things. Um, it's very convenient and heavily utilized, I must say. Uh, the convenience center hours of operation, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, uh, twelve-thirty to three-thirty during the week, and eight to four-thirty on Saturday. Uh, list of items accepted, uh, one of the ones that I'll ask you to pay particular attention to tonight is the CFC, C, GCFC, um, gas appliance fee of ten dollars. Uh, this fee has not been raised since, I believe, prior to twenty-twenty. Um, however, the cost to haul off those appliances that the city incurs has gone up, uh, and it's, it will go up again July one. Um, currently, it's fifteen dollars per appliance for us to have them disposed of, and we charge ten dollars, so there's a five-dollar subsidy on it, and it will go up to seventeen on July one. Uh, some other items listed here that I think are of value for people to know, um, especially brush. We, we do get a lot of service at the convenience center with people bringing in brush, um, yard and garden waste, uh, we accept car seats, mattresses, household furniture, um, major appliances. Uh, some items not accepted, so, um, larger stumps and logs, um, large lumber, concrete, masonry, largely due to the weight. Uh, we do not accept automobile vehicle parts, wet cell batteries, petroleum-based products, asbestos, and other hazmat substances, uh, kitchen or food waste, and paint and other liquids. Uh, the current fee schedule as it exists here, uh, you'll see for, um, residential waste, what we would classify as residential waste, uh, the charges associated with a car pickup, single-axle trailer or double-axle trailer. Uh, there is a separate fee for tires specifically, and also the CFC fee of ten dollars. Um, largely brush and yard waste, with the exception of a double-axle tra- uh, double-axle trailer, there is no charge. Um, I will say this, we do get a lot of questions when people come in with mixed debris, so brush and yard waste mixed with other things that we would typically charge for, we have to charge for that load. And then also fees associated with, uh, construction and demolition debris. Uh, there is a, a additional fee of ten dollars added to vehicles and trailers with raised sides simply because of their ability to hold more waste. Uh, so to the CFC disposal fee, so again, the current fee charged to residents is ten dollars. Um, the current cost to the city to dispose of these appliances through our CBWMA contract is fifteen dollars, and then this fee is set to increase to seventeen dollars, that's our cost on July one. Um, does it mean a whole lot? Well, the longer I talk about it, the less it means, because that's more time I spend up here. Um, you can see how many units typically year to year that we experience coming through the convenience center. Uh, there's a slight revenue loss associated with not matching the fee to our cost to dispose of. Um, our proposed fee schedule doesn't change any of the other fees that, uh, were revisited, um, a few years ago, but it does, uh, it would change the CFC fee to seventeen dollars to simply match our disposal cost. Uh, so the convenience center is still convenient, however, that cost, uh, will match what it does take for us to get rid of those appliances. Uh, this, uh, purpose of this presentation is, um, merely informational. Uh, the mechanism to effect this fee change, I have to discuss with the city attorney, but, um, I wanted to bring it before council and see if anybody had any questions relative to this particular topic.
Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Crocker?
Uh, yeah, I'll bring us the numbers from areas all around, because it's quite significant difference between the couple that I, the few cities or counties residents that I know of, and I would like to-
Are you referring to the convenience center in its entirety, or the CFC fees specifically?
The fees for the dump, like-
Oh, so all of them?
Right.
Okay, um, I would be happy to do that, um, any particular timeline?
No, just as soon as you can, I'll remind you, cause I've-
Sure. I do know, um, specifically from my own experience, living in a city that doesn't have a landfill anymore, and doesn't have a convenience center, it costs me forty dollars to get rid of a mattress, and we don't charge near that. So there's a fair, given the cost of the convenience center anecdotally, the, the cost that we experience versus the revenue we take in, it's a pretty good deal.
Forty dollars on it.
To, for me to get rid of a mattress, not in Hopewell, but-
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know, I've, well, I've never seen any, any place that high, I mean, I know of a lot of different places that-
The, the thing to remember too, I think, is, um, relative to what we take in at the convenience center, the cost associated with hauling that material off, because we don't operate a landfill anymore, is significant.
Yes, that's why I'm just-
But I'm, yes, we're happy to do that. I think we would like to look at the convenience center in a more, uh, comprehensive fashion, to look at all of those fees. Um, I think it's important to remember, we have to look at the fees not re- not only relative maybe to our neighboring localities, but relative to the cost incurred for us to get rid of that material.
Yes, it's expensive, right, thank you.
Um, only comment that I have is, um, you know, I have no problem, you know, with that fee going up to, um, you know, seventeen dollars in order to, you know, cover costs, um, but, you know, same thing, you know, that, you know, I said, you know, with Parks and Rec, and the same thing with Marina, I think, you know, we, you should look at studying the issue of, you know, the money that's made at the convenience center, going back and investing in, so that way we don't have, you know, a bunch of DEQ violations like we did in the past, um, where we had to pay, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, to remediate a bunch of issues, and, and I think, you know, doing it, you know, like this, just like at the Marina, you can start tackling things, you know, onesies and twosies, to prevent big capital needs.
Sure.
Okay, seeing no other lights, thank you. All right, uh, we are going to roll right into our regular meeting, uh, oops, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Day.
Here.
Councilor Stokes. Councilor Stokes.
Yes.
Councilor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Councilor Ellis.
Here.
You have a, come on.
Okay.
Get it out, sorry.
A little rusty.
A little rusty, yeah, a little rusty.
All right, um, we'll move into, uh, prayer by, let's see, I don't see Pastor Collier, uh, in the audience, that's all right. Um, I'll do the, uh, prayer, uh, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please rise. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to conduct the city's business, to make wise investments, to also set the direction for the city, and to move the city forward and along. Lord, we pray that you will be here, fill your, um, these chambers with your spirit as we, uh, discuss the city's business, and pray that you give us good wisdom, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We're in marriage.
I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we already amended the agenda, um, but there was one item, um, that was submitted last minute. It's only for discussion tonight, the actual vote will be in, um, July, cause we need two hearings. Um, but do we have a motion to amend the agenda, uh, to add a resolution for an additional Assistant Commonwealth's Attorney, and this will be discussed tonight, if you guys-
Say what?
Mister, Mister, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
This is, this is an amendment to the budget that doesn't increase above one percent, it can, it can be voted on and, and without, without advertisement. This is-
Right.
This is one that's mostly coming from, the funds are mostly coming from the state.
State com- right, that, but what I'm saying is, I don't think it's fair for people to vote on it, I think we should do it just like what we did the other three, where we had, you know, the, a, a first reading, and then we had the second reading. And this is just to educate the council on what it is, because this has the ability to save us a, a bunch of money. So is there a motion, uh, to add this item to the agenda?
I think we should go forward, uh, on the next meeting, not this one, to add it to the agenda.
I don't know, I think I've had this.
Is, is, all, all that, um, is asking for tonight is just to educate everyone, that's all, like-
I understand, but the meeting's already extended, I'm saying, I, I think that this should be placed on the agenda, let us read it, have sign, and sort of add it in.
Okay, is that the, okay?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right. So we will move right on along into our consent agenda. Is there a motion? Oh, well, we don't have anything. That's right on the consent agenda. Moving into communications from citizens. The first up is Dorothy Flowers. And Madam Clerk, can you read the statement?
Yes. A communication from citizens, period, limited... Sorry, can't hear me. A communication from citizens, period, limited in total time to 30 minutes, is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing the council shall approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comment to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any question must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements, or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers, may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council, and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules 405 and 406.
I'm leaving there, buddy. I need to show y'all this stuff.
Ms. Flowers, for the, can you just state your name?
Oh, what, stay right here?
Yes, stay right, so that way you can speak into the mics, so the people watching.
Okay, like that?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Dorothy Flowers, and I'm a, I live in Hopewell, Piper Square, Drive. So I gave some papers out here last time about my sickness to all y'all on this council thing, so I'm still having the same problems. And the people at housing, they not doing what they supposed to do. I had to file another complaint yesterday, and I could, if I show y'all...
Yeah, you can give it to the clerk, and then she'll pass it along.
And then, every time I call there, when I speak to one, they'll answer the phone and hang up on me. Hung up on me this morning. And then you call to housing, they never answer the telephone half of the time, they don't want to talk to people. But then they stopped them from charging people for gas bills. Then they took the charge, they turned it over to our rent, saying they gonna credit us for the rent, but you can't credit them if you ain't telling the people what the actual, that you done put into the gas bills. It's, the number should be there about it, what y'all gonna charge them, credit them, because some people been paying gas bills in Piper Square for a minute. And we got people over there, don't even pay a light beer, gas, or rent. And all us, we over there paying. And I mentioned this, I mean, I ain't being funny, I mean, something need to be done, because there's a lot of stuff going on. And then we got people that came over there for the C-Bout, the filters, and Piper Square got remodeled. All the filters over there, been there for four or five years, the man got some of them out of there yesterday. And people got kids, and I'm wanting to put people, I got health issues, too. We shouldn't have to live like that. As being, you know, we, we citizens like everybody else up here. We all should be able to help each other. And it, it's nothing getting done. Then they call, you talk to them, they hang the phone up and told me, I'm not gonna talk to you and hang up in my ear. I have a right. We all have rights. It's nothing being done. It's, it should be something done. And my doctors, I'm sending doctors orders to them. They done violate my rights, and I got people living over top me, starving all night long, and other activities going on in my clothes, and stuff in the closet. And I've been going through this since May the 8th. We taking care, ain't nothing got taken care of yet. Then I filed another complaint yesterday. Then I, then I still, then I, then I called one of the people on city council, talked to him about it, and he tried to do the best he can. And he not, you know, he's not in my ward, but I still talk to him. But he does the best he can. But I shouldn't have to go through this. Nobody shouldn't have to go through this. They living over there, they not doing nothing for the people, and then they hanging up on you, then half of the time they don't answer the telephone. Nobody shouldn't have to go through none of this, being sickly or not sickly. If you pay your bills, you shouldn't have to go through this. And ever since I've been a citizen of Hopewell, I've been here since 1976. I moved in housing in 1987. And I never not paid my bills or my rent. Never. So I'm, I'm like, hey, somebody need to step up to the plate. I don't care how it go, whatever, they need to do something about people that work in their house, and they not doing their job. The people living like they living.
So, Ms. Flowers, if you don't mind...
Yes, sir.
Do you mind just giving the letters to the clerk?
Yes, sir.
Because then what she can do is make...
But I need this back, I'm gonna let y'all read.
Okay.
This is what we got today, but something...
She can make a copy of it.
Do you mind if we make a copy?
Yeah, you can get copies. And I appreciate y'all for hearing me out, but something need to be done.
So I can tell you that, you know, we're in the midst right now of getting a joint meeting together with the, with the housing authority.
I understand that, but people have problems need more, too, though.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Yeah, no, that's what we're saying.
That's what we're doing. We're, we're getting a meeting together so we can address a lot of these, you know, issues.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
And then we also, you have our interim city manager meeting with the housing director, you know, to, to help out, you know, I think, you know, with areas of improvement that can be done.
Yeah, this is what going on at night time, over top my head, and I'm smelling this stuff there, there's in my clothes.
Yes, ma'am. But, yeah, but, yeah, we'll get, they're, they're going to make copies. She gonna bring it to you.
I'm waiting for it.
Well, yeah, we're just gonna tell you, you can just sit there on the bench, so that way we can also have the other folks come up.
Anyway, I hope something done about this, because this is how they going through this since I've been over there, May the 8th.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have is Mr. Mark Burrows.
Mayor Parton sent Mark Burrows?
Burrows. I'll give you the sheet, we're finished.
Good evening. My name's Mark Burrows, Ward 3. First of all, I hope that all y'all are warm enough. I was hoping the city attorney was here. I'd like to apologize for a miscommunication on my part. When addressing the city's attorney, the city attorney's conduct during the pledge last meeting, I've stated that he was sitting there, and I meant in the sense that he was present, not necessarily sitting. I'd like to apologize for inaccurately describing the conduct, and I fully recognize that he was standing with his head, hand over his heart, and I apologized to him, and hope that my backwards vocabulary caused him no issues. I'd also like to thank the council members who stood in opposition to the weapons ban. I wish the others, the million citizens that spoke against it with such vigor, were here and willing to join me in thanking you for making the right choice. My complaint for the night, I understand that Hopewell needs money, but I don't feel that gambling with the taxpayers' money is the right avenue. Buying buildings and building additions to the Marina is just that, gambling. It is a gamble if anyone will want to put their business in those buildings, or even in this city. Why don't we focus on the one building that we've already purchased before we commit our tax dollars to something else? If it's being paid for by a grant from the state or the federal level, then please proceed with reckless abandon, but understand that complete failure is still an option, and that we as the citizens, we as the citizens cannot shoulder the burden of that failure. Lastly, I'm here before you in these chambers, begging you to please get involved in the neighborhood meetings. It's a great place to have some candid conversations. That being said, I do appreciate the continued phone conversations with some of you, and look forward to working with some more of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Next is Laura Greenwood.
You met me live two weeks ago. I didn't get to finish, so I'm back. But today, I'm not gonna re, go back to what I was discussing last time. I'm a little more upset in regards to, I'm from Ward 6, and my representative, I left her with all my information, contact information. As I left, the lady gave me her, the, my representative's sign number, and I turned around and text her all my information as well. I understand that she's been ill, and I, I'm sorry that she's sick. I hope she gets well soon, but to ignore me is not gonna work. I'm holding you all accountable, because you represent we the people, right? We the people loaded you guys in. We the people pay you, right? And I understand that July, August, and September, you're only gonna have one meeting a month. Somebody had said something about that, and I said, well, are they willing to take 50% of their payback? You need to have two per month and allow citizens to come in here and talk to you, and listen to us. You spending $5,000 on that stupid bank, yet you not willing to get the community center the money? That's where people go. We're not gonna go over to that building. I don't care if you run it out to some farmer, I don't care. They go to the community center. You get the money to the community center. I second this gentleman's comments. You guys got to stop this stuff. You represent us. You don't call us before you make these decisions. These are important decisions when you go spend $500,000 on a friggin' building. You don't call us. Ms. Stacks don't call me. Doesn't call. This is what I recommend, and you can take it or leave it. I am a marketing analyst professionally. I will help you each contact your people in your wards, and get a thing together. I do know people move and stuff, but you have a baseline of who to contact. And I told you last time that you need to mail it. There are a lot of people don't have the, this is a impoverished city. They don't have the internet. A lot of these people, these seniors, they don't even know what it is. You've got to reach them out the way, best you can, which is by mail. Very cheap, inexpensive. So that's one thing. The other thing is that, call me if you need some assistance in the marketing analysis and getting things together. I left my phone number and stuff at Ms. Stokes' desk. Call me. I'll be happy to help you, and I'm not gonna charge you. I'm retired. Give me something to do. All right? You've got my asset, I'm giving you my assets to help you. And this way, the next person who ends up running for your ward, you can pass that information off to them, and vice versa. You know, that's, that's just the way to do. You represent us, guys. And I don't like it when you sit here and make these judgment calls without talking to at least the majority of your ward.
Ms. Greenwood.
Is my three minutes up?
Go figure.
Yeah. That's another thing. It needs to be five. And you guys, on those days, July, August, and September, I recommend you have in town hall meetings, and give people 10 minutes. Thank you.
That was the last person that I have signed up for this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Darlene Thompson, Ward 6. I came tonight a little after 7:00. I looked on City Council Live, and I see where you all were supposed to be starting the meetings at 7:30. I knew, know you all had talked about changing the time, but you all, even on, on television, on Channel 3, they still have like 8 o'clock. So this information needs to be updated as to what time city council meetings are going to start, because it hasn't been happening, is like sometimes 7 o'clock, sometimes 7:30. And also, I notice that we have been having meetings, but we don't have any documentation back there for us to be able to follow suit as to what's going on, especially with our budget, our numbers. They can get up here and talk fast, and give numbers, but we don't have anything. You can barely see that monitor up there while they are presenting. So when they come before city council meeting to vote, to bring, do a presentation, they need to be bringing information so that we can have the documentation to be able to follow through. We don't have that. And if nothing else, the numbers, I, I know the way that they do the finances is pots and pools of money here and there. So you can't really keep track of what is going on intentionally, but at least when they come before city council, we should be able to have that information. The one thing that Bob Numm said is for you all to be transparent with the citizens. And you all know that y'all are not being transparent. And everybody knows what's going on from the DA's down to your CFO that is presenting, and your city manager. They know where those numbers are. Okay? $5 million collected for over assessment, I'm gonna keep saying it, because I want the people to know. $5 million for the over assessment, and then another 2-point-whatever million dollars for the rates going up, and you all don't see fit to have ward meetings. I understand that y'all are supposed to be giving back to each one of you all the $98,000 that was budgeted for last year, that y'all can be able to give that money to, donate it to different organizations. You all are broke. No way can you be doing that. Y'all keep showing your hands, and sit there and act like you don't know what's going on. Lies, lies, lies. And then Charles Bennett come here, $500,000 for the Marina? Yes, yes, yes. Charles Bennett come, $500,000 for the Bank of America? Yes, 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 yes. Okay? We have got, we have shallow lodge going on.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are...
Okay. Thank you, yes, we do need to increase that three minutes.
All right, we're moving on now to the city manager comments. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, we can, we can get those numbers, and we can, you know, let people know a lot.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Counsel, last week, we were, had a little bit of a tussle in getting the latest update on information for, for the audit, so that we could do the trial balance. And we pushed, we got the information, it's been handed over to, to Robertson, former Cox, and, and we should still make our deadline for the end of the month. Ms. Stacy? End of the month?
I'd like for a response from Mr. Foley, but we still plan on presenting for council in July, but we're too stressed.
Great, fantastic.
So, and we'll keep a focus on that, because we understand how important, how important it is. We are working on that meeting with the housing authority, and I have been in contact. Every bit of information I get from, from a citizen, you know, I feed it to them, and, you know, pushing them to, to address it. And there are some activities happening in the case of Ms. Flowers' case, you know, that, something has happened, just not able to discuss it, you know, publicly at, at this time, but we will not turn a deaf ear to citizen concerns. I want people to know that when it comes to us, we will be responsive, and we will work with the housing authority, or any other agency that is citizen-facing, to try to achieve accountability that the city expects in terms of serving, serving citizens. I'll ask Ms. Stacy Jordan to kind of report to you her participation in a seminar, a webinar today, from the Virginia Municipal League, on legislative services. And this is a precursor to our July meeting, where I will ask our Legislative Affairs Consultant to come and make a presentation. Stacy?
Good afternoon, good evening, council members. Today, we had our Virginia Municipal Legislative Committee meeting today, and some of the topics that was discussed, of course, were federal issues with funding. One of the biggest things that's getting ready to come down the pike is the reduction in the Medicaid funding, which would also, it would cause an issue with EMS billing, because a lot of the billing comes through Medicaid, so they're gonna be losing some of that funding, SNAP benefits, as well as some K... SNAP benefits, as well as some K, um, K through twelve funding. See, we also talked about, um, the possibility of the state getting rid of BPOL taxes or reducing those. That would be a loss to the city, of course, because we use revenue for business license as well as personal property, which would be eight point two million dollar loss to us if the state decides to get rid of our personal property. That would be a huge hit to the city of Hopewell. They still have not came, uh, came up with an agreement to, um, tax gaming, skip, the game of skills, you know, the slot machines and the convenience stores. They still have not been able to come to an agreement upon that of bringing the revenue into the locality. Right now, it's on a state level, but the localities have been fighting to get some of that revenue into the locality, which would be a great help. And then water quality improvement. One of the gentlemen's on the call today was a mayor from Hampton. They just got a twenty million dollar grant pulled from them for improvements for their sewer system from the federal government. Yeah. That's the update we have today.
And the reason, uh, I wanted her to report that is that, uh, the Virginia Municipal League is a very important entity to us. Uh, and we would encourage council to, um, up your participation and be present uh, so that, uh, Hopewell has a voice in those discussions. Uh, with the management level, we will be present. Uh, but I think it's also important to have representation at the, at the legislative level as well.
So would you recommend, like, um, appointing, like, maybe like a, a primary and an alternate to try to attend meetings? Okay.
That would be ideal.
Okay. Um, we'll put that on the, um, Ms. Best, can you make a note, um, of that to include in with our, um, closed session agenda for appointments for, in July?
In July.
And that, that concludes my observations for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you, um, you know, one for both of those reports, but also, um, it has been an ongoing issue, you know, as Ms. Flowers mentioned, you know, with the Hopeful Redevelopment Housing Authority. And, um, your engagement over there, I think, has really been a positive influence. Um, because I'm starting to get just like, it's a couple of calls, it's not a lot, but, you know, it's more than zero, um, of things getting addressed in a more timely fashion. Um, so I, I think you've been a very good positive influence, um, in starting up that relationship. And then hopefully, when we have this joint meeting with their board, um, we can try to, you know, get things moving a little bit better and try to get some more improvements done over there for the, for the residents.
That's right. Um, all right. Did you say something, Mr. Harris?
City manager.
Mr. Harris, did you have a question for us?
Yeah, for the city manager.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I was wondering, has he got any kind of, uh, uh, response back in regards to his investigation over the Department of Public? Based on a comment that we received from, uh, Elaine Parsons, uh, in a meeting before, I was just wondering if there's anything to report on that.
Human Resources is looking into that matter, and that's all I will, I, I'm able to say publicly. But, uh, we are very attentive to it. And we will report when there is something to report. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move into our public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing that we have is Mr. Ward. And as he is coming up and getting ready, um, Ms. Best, do you mind just reading the statement for the public hearing?
It's the same as the communication from citizens.
The communication from citizens?
Yeah.
A communication from citizens period, limited in total time to thirty minutes, is part of the order of business at regular council meetings. All persons addressing the council shall approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of a meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal and pertinent abusive or slow-vested statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council, see Rule four oh five and four oh six.
Go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am back here tonight with a, uh, public hearing regarding the city's community development block grant funding program. Uh, just to, uh, give some quick background, this is money that is provided to the city. This is federal government money. It comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We see, we receive an annual allotment every year. We don't have to ask for it. It is just provided to the city, uh, since we are the entitlement community. HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable communities and quality, affordable homes. And the expenditure of these funds, uh, has a lot of requirements tied to it. But the three primary ones are that the expenditure of the funds has to, uh, meet one of three national objectives. Uh, number one being benefit to low to moderate income persons or households, uh, the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or, uh, lastly, urgent need. So we've received about, uh, a little over one and a half million dollars, uh, since twenty nineteen from HUD, from the federal government. Uh, we, when I was here last time, we did not know what our annual award was for this year. We have been notified by HUD that this year we are receiving a little bit less than last year. It's two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars total. So, um, staff has reviewed all the applications that were solicited. Um, staff has met with the CDBG committee, uh, which is comprised of, uh, city, uh, subgroup of city council. And, uh, we've come, um, we're coming before you this evening with the following proposal, that funds will be coming from three different funding streams, all underneath the community development block grant program. And I'll get into that, um, in a little bit more detail in just, just a minute. So, uh, we'll just move into what the recommendations are. Uh, first off, HUD allows the city to, um, twenty percent of the funding that goes straight to the administration of the program. And then we are able to fund, uh, some public service, nonprofit organizations in the city. HUD places a cap of fifteen percent maximum of the allocation that we receive. So this year, we received four applications. Hebron, Healthy Families, The James House, and Pretty Purposed. Two of them are youth, provide youth services, uh, at the schools, excuse me. Yeah, yeah, they do. And, uh, Healthy Families provides youth and childcare services in the city.
Are you driving or am I driving?
I'm driving.
Okay, no, you're not. Now you are.
Yeah, I think it was showing on the monitor.
I was following you as best I could because I didn't know that you were driving.
Okay, sorry. I meant to tell you. Uh, and lastly, um, The James House, uh, is another applicant. And as you can see, uh, between staff and CDBG committees' recommendations, uh, we're recommending funding Hebron five thousand dollars. It's an after-school program. Uh, Healthy Families, ten thousand nine oh eight for child abuse prevention. The James House, fifteen thousand dollars for domestic violence intervention. And, uh, Pretty Purposed, five thousand dollars, again, after-school youth services. That total is thirty-five thousand nine oh eight, so we're right at our fifteen thousand dollar cap. The balance of the money, uh, would go to housing rehabilitation. Uh, the city's housing rehab program is, uh, a large chunk of our annual allocation. These funds are used to benefit low to moderate income owner occupants. And we had two applicants this year, uh, project homes and rebuilding together. Pretty much all of our applicants apply for this money year after year, and our funding looks pretty similar every year. That total is a hundred and forty thousand. Uh, in addition, uh, Hopewell Economic Development and Tourism Department has applied for funds, uh, to construct uh, an ADA compliant, uh, connection ramp from the land to the Riverwalk. Uh, this qualifies under a, uh, benefit to LMI persons just based off of what's called a presumed benefit. That's, uh, that's basically the quick overview of this year's funding allocation of the two hundred and, approximately two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Moving on, uh, we still have some unspent funds from previous years. There is a potential risk of HUD recapturing that money if we don't allocate it and spend it. So, um, again, the Riverwalk connection, um, the department has asked for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for that ADA accessible connection. These would be funds that, uh, remain unspent dating back to twenty eighteen. Lastly, we still have a little bit of, uh, CDBG COVID money that remained unspent. Uh, this money will be taken from the city if it is not allocated and spent, uh, prior to September of next year. So we are proposing, and in conjunction with, um, one of the providers that we worked very closely with during COVID, and that is Commonwealth Catholic Charities, to fund then the remaining thirty-one thousand two oh two for homeless outreach services, which is one of the services they've provided to the city on and off for, uh, quite a number of years. So in total, this is the draft, uh, budget for this year's annual action plan. Uh, again, this first slide is showing you, um, this year's annual allocation. And then the rest of it is the unspent funds from previous years and the unspent, uh, COVID-related money. For a total of five twenty-eight, five ninety-three, twenty-seven. This is also a consolidated plan year, so we are required by HUD to draft a five-year consolidated plan. As you can see here, these are our priority, priority needs and goals for the next five years. They pretty much remain the same as they were in the previous five years. We have not received any public comment whatsoever, uh, up to this point. We've, we've had two, uh, excuse me, one public hearing. Uh, this is, tonight is the second. All the documents and budgets have been placed online and distributed in paper to the community center, HRHA offices, and the public library, as well as available in our department. I am asking for action this evening to approve this proposed budget because I do have to get everything submitted to HUD by August sixteenth. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Absolutely.
Uh, Counselor Holloway, then Counselor Day.
You're, you're asking for the approval of those fundings as presented tonight? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir. And remember, this is all HUD money. This is not city money.
Right.
This is our annual allocation plus the two other, the unspent COVID money and the unspent funds from previous years.
I, I would, I would... Is there an issue if we hold this until next, uh, meeting? Asking because some of the things that was listed on here, I, I, I think we, the city already has, uh, like, like for instance, social services, for example, some of these fundings can go to, I, I think, other things I would like to look into before. I, I wasn't aware that this was going to be requested for vote tonight.
Uh, yeah, apologizing, and I presented this as a work session, uh, at the last meeting. And we are required to submit our plans to HUD. We cannot be later than August sixteenth, or else we will not receive this money at all.
Yeah, that's correct. That's why I asked for the, the next meeting that we were before. If this is already... Because when are you planning on submitting it?
I would like to submit it as soon as possible because HUD has to take thirty days to review it. And then they have to get us a contract. It just delays us in getting started for the year. So I could bring it. You do not have to take action tonight, and I think I could still meet the deadline of the August sixteenth if we bring it back at the July meeting. Um, I just would prefer for action tonight, if, if at all possible. It just moves things along a lot quicker.
Um, I would say, Counselor Holloway, um, I might make a recommendation. I think, you know, just like the, uh, example that Stacy gave us about, you know, the federal, you know, yanking, you know, money back real quickly. I think it might be a good idea to make sure that we, you know, can get the money and then we can PO it and contract it as quick as possible. But with, you know, your ideas that you have for some other organizations, that, you know, we can, you know, go and try to consolidate those for, you know, more, because we still are going to have, probably end up having some unspent money.
Well, I'm talking, and I ain't talking about, uh, different organizations than I see listed, but I'm talking about, I, I, I think, I think a better serve, like, for instance, I looked into the Catholic charities before when they were running the, uh, what was it, the, uh, shelter or whatever?
They used to run our shelter.
Correct. And, uh, some of the complaints that were coming in at the time and so forth, and so I, I'm kind of partial from that information, I think, that you, that was presented from that, with that organization, uh, particularly, and some of the things that was coming in from the city versus some of the other things. That's, that's my concern. Uh, particularly with that organization, especially with the information that they had brought in to us. Uh, I believe that was year before last, uh, with that organization. So that, that's where my concern lies.
If, if that's where your concern lies, could I potentially ask that you, um, take action on just our annual allocation funding? And if you've got questions about the CV funds, because that's what would be used to pay, pay Catholic charities. We can deal with that at a different time. Um, that's not the critical part.
Right.
The critical part is the two hundred and thirty-nine of this year's annual allocation.
Well, no, 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 I agree with that.
And, and I'd be happy to come back at a later time on the CV money. If, if that's acceptable to you.
Yes, that's, that's good.
So let me ask you, if the, if the only issue's on the Catholic charity, can we just parse that one out and then approve the others?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I just want to make sure that.
I can come back later about the CV money if, and we, we can, we can be in the CDBG committee again too.
I mean, I also do.
That will not affect our, uh, August sixteenth deadline.
Okay.
It's this year's annual allocation, which I'll back up. It's this one here on the screen.
Yeah, with the, you, you're talking about with the hundred thousand dollars and the, um, and, and...
Yeah, it's right here on the screen. These are all the proposed, uh, funding levels and, um, organizations to receive funding in this year's annual allocation. That's what we're under the gun for, uh, on a, from a timeline standpoint.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I don't want to hold up. Yeah, uh, just, yeah, just, uh, one quick second. Um, I just don't want to, you know, hold up things like, you know, project homes, rebuilding together, and, you know, the Riverwalk extension, because those are all positives that will end up, you know, affecting, you know, our bond rating.
Right. So if, if the CV funds and Catholic charities are the only concern at this point, that can be pulled out and the rest of it can still, you can still take action on the rest of it this evening, and we'll meet all of our timelines and everything.
Okay.
Okay?
I just want to make sure that we don't hold up the, the Riverwalk, we don't hold up Project Homes, Rebuilding Together, because those are, you know, very, the quicker we get, you know, those types of improvements done, the more positive benefit that we can see, you know, when they give us that diagnostic reading, you know, the total city's, um, you know, asset worth.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
And I would love to see action on everything except the CV money.
Okay. Um, so, uh, sorry, uh, Counselor, uh, Day, and then, uh, Counselor Stokes.
I get, um, questions about, you know, how, why these certain things. I know you kind of touched on it a little bit in the beginning, but I was at this CBDG meeting, you know, when you explained a lot of this, like, for the Riverwalk, for instance, you know, why put that amount of money to that? And I know it's because it has to be used for certain things, and that kind of falls under that COVID criteria, right, at the time? Um, is how I think you explained it to us before, but I think it's just good to make sure people understand that this money has to be used for particular things. It can't just be put, you know, anywhere.
That's correct. We, we have, HUD has very strict, uh, funding calculations that we have to follow, which is why we have caps on certain activities. And, uh, it gets really tricky. I don't want to, I mean, this stuff's kind of dry already. I don't want to put people to sleep.
Right.
But if you do have particular questions, you can always either ask tonight or give me a... But if you do have particular questions, you can always either ask tonight or give me a call.
And yet, can, and as Counselor Day said, can you state the, I think they were already listed, but can you just reiterate, since we're talking about those three, what was it, three categories of things that those...
Right. So, so there's the annual allocation that we receive every year, and that's approximately two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and change. It, it varies every year. Last year was two forty-two. That's what has to be hopefully dealt with this evening so that I can do what I need to do to get it up to HUD by August sixteenth. Excuse me.
Yeah.
The second one would be what, what I just call unspent funds from previous years. And that's basically the annual allocations that we get, but for whatever reason, not a hundred percent of the funds were expended. Either, you know, projects came in cheaper, or someone didn't perform at the level that they told us they would, so therefore they weren't eligible to receive the money. And we have money dating back to twenty eighteen that is unspent. All of that, there, there is a potential risk, you know, there, there actually is a movement in Congress right now to defund this program a hundred percent across the board nationwide. So, the thinking was, we have to spend that money eventually. Why risk losing it altogether and just apply it to a project now that qualifies, which the Riverwalk project would qualify for this? And just spend it before Congress takes it back, essentially.
Yeah.
And then, lastly, the third funding stream is that leftover COVID money, the CV money, which we had allocated towards, we're proposing to allocate towards Catholic charities. And that has, again, has to be spent on something very specifically related to COVID. And at this point, the only thing that still exists that we could come up with that's fundable is homeless outreach services.
Wouldn't mental health be one?
I, I, mental health, I don't think would qualify under COVID. It has to be for the prevention or the elimination of exposure to the COVID virus.
Okay.
So, homeless outreach services is just one of those few things that we do here that would qualify.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I don't like this, uh, just reiterate to citizens that it wasn't that leaders like you weren't doing your job as to the reason why this funding wasn't spent, things like, at, at time during those years, the city did not have... I remember, and you can correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but, uh, previous years, for example, the city did not have the proper engineering place, engineer in place and things of that nature and specifics by the states, state was given in order for us to be able to spend those fundings, just in case the citizens was like, well, why didn't I use them? You know, uh, things of that nature. But I'm glad for the opportunity for us to be able to go forward with these things now. I'd like to make a motion.
We're going to do the public hearing first.
Oh.
That's all right.
I have a question.
I mean, but I'm still waiting to speak.
I, I know, just, just hold on. Counselor Stokes, and then Vice Mayor Joyner.
To Dominique, we, we sat on the committee and it was a long, drawn-out meeting on what the funding would be funded for. And I made and raised the same sentiments you did about Catholic charities because, you know, citizens complained about the delivery of service. So, we did address that, and the gentleman just answered that. They were the ones that were qualified that had applied for the funding. I had the same concerns on the board as a member of the board. That's my comment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Joyner?
I guess my question is, with regard to what you want us to vote on tonight, do you, do we pull out the thirty-one, two oh two, twenty-seven out of that two thirty-nine, three ninety-one?
No, it would actually come out of the five twenty-eight, five ninety-three, twenty-seven.
Okay, we're going to have to pull it out of that total then.
Yeah, and I don't do math real well.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we were pulling out of the right, right area.
Yeah, I mean, the motion that, you know, I was going to read out is just going to be to approve, you know, the plan and everything with the pullout of the, the CV funds.
Okay, got it.
I think that's acceptable.
Okay. Because that's only com, that's only Catholic charities.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, just...
Yeah, thirty-one thousand, two oh two, twenty-seven.
Chris, that's all.
We're all good. It gets tricky.
Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and let's open up the public hearing. Uh, we don't have anyone signed up tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, sir.
As I've stated before, I am not a budget guru, I am not a numbers guy, I'm a hammering nails.
Mr. Barrows, just state your name. Oh, sorry. For the record, that's all.
Mark Barrows, Ward Three, everybody knows me. Okay. I'm not a budget guy, I'm a hammering nails, run through the woods, swing like Tarzan type guy. That being said, um, I would, I'm curious as to how many projects we have going on in the city, given Ms. Jordan's report, that fall under grant money that we are potentially going to be losing if the government continues to withdraw grant funding? And are we, as a city, prepared to lose that funding and still operate and have citizens taken care of? And due to that, I'm curious if things like the Riverwalk are the best use of this money, or should it be allocated to something that may have been covered by a grant later on that we potentially will lose in the future? I don't know how all that works. Like I said, I'm not a budget guy. I just see Riverwalk after hearing Ms. Flowers talk, and if that money could be reallocated to make a house better or a housing unit better, I feel like that would be a better use of that money. I don't know if it can be or not, but thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Darlene Thompson, Ward Six. I'm hearing about this money, but I remember the last year or two, we've been dealing with a homeless crisis, crisis here in Hopewell, where there seemed to be no funding. We could have kept the homeless shelter open all summer for people to have somewhere to go. So, now the money is always at the last minute that we need to do something. If the money was sitting, people came before city council addressed it over and over again that we had a problem with the homeless. Now, we are planning to use a building that we didn't pay five hundred thousand dollars for to home the homeless for eight or ten hours a day. It doesn't get any better. This city council continues to disappoint, continues to disappoint. And each time we have people coming before us, like I said, pools of money here, pools of money there, money that should have been used, now we got to take action when city council don't seem to be prepared. But they will fi, finish that Riverwalk, okay? That Riverwalk is going to be finished, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, but we have the homeless here. You all do not disappoint. I just hope that the people, the citizens of Hopewell continue to listen in. That's one of the reasons y'all don't want newsletters to go out, because you, you don't want people to know who you all are and who they are voting for. But I keep stressing to them, come to your city council meetings, because this is what goes on here. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, is there a motion to approve the annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan and to authorize the city manager to submit both plans to HUD with the exception of the COVID funds? Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Discussion, Counselor Holloway.
Before we vote on this matter tonight, I kind of want to... If I can speak on this. I, I am in agreement to the simple, to, to the space of the citizens' concerns. I just want to say, I don't think that that is the directors or the city councils' stance to spend this particular money in a way that is not necessary for the city. There's a, there's a, I, I would, I would say, just like, your, your last name pronunciation, I believe, is Barrows. Mr. Barrows had came up here and said, get with, get with your counselors on times that you can, just like he submitted that he was doing, and also have a seat with the city manager as he has invited the public to make appointments to discuss these things. Because in these meetings, there are things that we discuss in closed sessions that aren't, that we can't necessarily just blad out to the public, because there are contracts and things that are involved that are in the city's best interest not to put those things in place. But I can assure you, for some of these concerns that you have, there are projects and things that are in place that are coming forth. This isn't just a spending of these funds towards something like the, like the, I wanted to call it thing the Boardwalk. What's its proper name? The River Rock, River Walk. And then comparing that to a elderly citizen who is at home, who got a roof leak type of thing. Even though it appears that way tonight, that is not exactly what's going on here. When it comes to funding, as the director had said, certain things have obligations there. And meetings are taking place to address those things. But say for example, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Director, some of those projects that we may have wanted to push money towards and say, hey, then we have to go and let departments look at state laws and code to see how long it would take us to roll out those projects. And then by the time those projects are rolled out, i- i- it won't work. So, we have, we, we have specific stipulations that are put on, put in place on us that the common citizen won't know in a two or three-hour meeting. But you can always ask those questions and get those answers. And I just wanted to share that with the citizens tonight, because I can, you can rest assured, coming from the background that I have, that I would not absolutely say support a Riverwalk. And then on top of that, there are some other things that you may not understand about what bonding is. If I asked you right now, wha, wha, what the bond is and what the mayor was speaking on, you probably won't know it. But if you sit down with the mayor, sit down with the city manager, they can kind of explain to you more why it's important for us to complete this Riverwalk. When citizens get up and talk about things like spending taxpayer dollars and so forth and so on, well, the city can go out and get other grants and so forth. But in receiving some of those grants, we have to have certain ratings and, and like a credit score, so forth, that the city can go out and qualify, if you would, for, for these grants, for the other grants, so that we won't put the weight on the citizens' tax dollars. And right now, we're working towards getting those things straight. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on that tonight.
Seeing no other lights, roll call, please.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
I, I, I just wanted to say this before we voted on this, because, uh, what it was, the comment that Counselor Stokes made in regards to the meeting that we had with, uh, Mr. Ward and, and, uh, we committed that, I've been on, since I've been on council, and, and the things, and the way, what we discussed is how we going to spend this money. This is not a lot of money, but it, we get it because it's entitlement. We're an entitlement community, and we have to put it to our best, our best use for the community. And we do have, uh, uh, you know, a, a homeless outreach part that some of this money goes to. Uh, some other things that we discussed in our meeting that everybody was not available for before we, you know, would, would seek to use the money that's provided to us for various reasons. So, I, you know, I, I, it was like I said, like Counselor Stokes said, it was a meeting that took us a while to get some resolve about what we would do with this, this money, and we, and, uh, we, we came up with that. And I thought that we had covered a lot of things, but, you know, I, I, I think that, um, we need to get a closer look or understanding of where, where this money is intended to go and how it's to go. So, I, you know, it, it, it's tough, because what it is that we do have to be is careful about our spending. In regards to individuals like Ms. Flowers, who came forward with what's going on with her situation, and there's others. There are many of them. I hear from them every day. So, about what it is that we choose to do with what we have. I just wanted to say that myself before I voted on this. And I think that we came up with, in the meeting that we had, we came up with a way to go, and I think it's the right way, so that's what we accomplished in our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes? Is she still there?
She's muted.
Counselor Stokes, could you un, well, you can't hear me to unmute, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question. Would you like for Catholic charities to come present to you as to the services they could offer for that funding?
I know, I'm, I'm personally aware of it. We report this information in terms I have with things that we report with the tax administration and so forth. And so, I, I, I just personally, and actually, I think we have other things that you have already listed, other organizations on here already that can cover, even city departments, that, that those fundings can go to.
Why don't you guys, as a CDBG committee, have a meeting and talk about, you know, options for, you know, what these, you know, COVID, you know, dollars?
Yeah, it's, it's COVID money, so we are extremely limited as to what we can spend.
And I know it's, well, you know, you didn't say that one was as under a time constraint.
September of next year.
Yeah.
The Treasury will take it back.
Okay. But yeah, I, I, I think if you guys, you know, put your, all your heads together and you think and look and evaluate some organizations, you know, if, you know, they're the only game in town, I mean, we don't have much to do, but, you know, to, you know, explore some other options.
We will do that.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, regular business. Uh, Ms. Jordan, you got all three. Lightning round.
Good evening again, counsel. Our one is the CSA budget adjustment for other purchase services for fiscal year twenty-five, an increase of one point five, which will be only a city cost of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is to, to summer programs and additional kids being in the program, as well as the cap that the General Assembly took off of some of the vendors for CSA services.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the creation of the Deputy Clerk Four position approved for funding by the General Assembly as presented tonight?
The first one was the CSA.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong, I got the wrong action form in front of me, my bad. See, you can tell that I'm, I'm lightning rounding right now. All right, sorry.
That's okay.
To approve the increase in the budget appropriation for fiscal year twenty-five for the CSA Fund Zero One Five. All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway, seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now, number two.
Our two is the General Assembly has provided a new deputy clerk position to the Circuit Clerk Court's Office of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The position will be available July first, twenty twenty-five. Majority of this fund, the money is being provided by the state, so it's really a small cost to the city, which has been attached to the CS, um, the CAF, sorry. Yes.
So moved. Oh, well, I'd like to make a motion.
To approve the creation of the Deputy Four Clerk position.
To approve the creation of the deputy four clerk position approved, uh, for the fu- approved by the funding of the General Assembly as presented tonight.
Yes, so moved.
Alright, I'll second it. Motion's been made by Council Holloway and seconded by myself, seeing no lights for discussion, roll call please.
Council Day?
Yes.
Council Stokes?
Yes.
Council Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Council Alice?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, uh, R three.
R three is the ordinance to be adopted for Department of Social Services, the state has provided them one point five percent bonuses. However, they will not provide the locality of the money unless this, that we have an ordinance in place, so this is money that comes from the state.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, authorizing the local government, uh, bonus for the, uh, social services employees as presented? Uh, motion's been ma- I'll second it, uh, motion's been made by Council Harris, seconded by myself. Any discussion, seeing no lights, roll call please.
Council Day?
Yes.
Council Stokes?
Yes.
Council Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Council Alice?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
And, um, after a good meeting, um, I'm gonna close out on a positive note, I'm sure many of you guys have seen, um, on the news, uh, but we had a, um, a local, uh, Hopewellian, uh, over the past couple weeks, uh, win a Tony uh, for, uh, best director of a, um, of a play. And so, uh, we wanna congratulate and extend our, um, you know, biggest kudos and, uh, congratulations to Sam Pinkleton. And, um, hopefully, uh, soon, we'll be able to do a, uh, a special recognition for him. So, uh, with that.
The soccer, the soccer team.
The soccer team.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes.
Both, one minute.
Yeah, thank you, and, um, also, um, congratulations to our local, uh, soccer team, uh, that I think they got, uh, second place regional.
A second?
Yeah. I think they were, they almost made it, um, almost made state champion.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think it was girls then.
Was it girls then, boys?
I think so, cause I end up seeing.
I know I saw, uh, I know I saw the boys.
And, and congratulations also, uh, to those in the, um, track and field and shout, my son out, Kamar Holloway, who graduated this year, he, um, ended up going to regionals, then state, and then nationals in North Carolina.
Oh, that's exciting.
Place, tenth place nationally, so congratulations to him.
Alright, local home talent, going places. Alright, with that, we will close the meeting, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.